September 3, 2024. Take approval of the agenda, please. Counsel Norbury.
That the September 3, 2024, regular council meeting agenda be adopted as presented.
Seconder, Counsel Julek. All in favor? Carried. Adoption minutes for August 6, 2024, regular council meeting minutes. Recommendation, please. Counsel Noxana.
That the August 6, 2024, regular council meeting minutes be adopted as presented.
Seconder, Counsel Dusso. Any errors or omissions, counsel? Call a question. All in favor? Carried. 3.2, August 26, 2024, special council meeting minutes. Recommendation, please. Counsel Dusso.
That the August 26, 2024, special council meeting minutes be adopted as presented.
Seconder, Counsel Klikash. Any errors or omissions from counsel? Call a question. All in favor? Carried. Business arising from the minutes. Anything from counsel? Staff? Thank you. Delegations have just been aware, or made aware that our delegation is not going to make it tonight. So we're just going to move on to consent agenda. Take the recommendation, please. Counsel Noxana.
That all items in the September 3, 2024, consent agenda be moved for information.
Seconder, Counsel Julek. All in favor? Carried. Any items counsel would like to bring forward? Before I start off from counsel, I'd like to bring forward 7.11, West Moberly First Nations Correspondence dated August 22 for discussion. Seconder, Counsel Noxana. All in favor? Posed? Carried. I think we should put it on the floor. I think if anybody from council couldn't attend, I think we just advise Ms. Scott that if we can. So I know myself, I will be attending the TLE signing with West Moberly and Hudson Hole. If anybody else from council wants to come down on the Saturday, if we can just email and let Ms. Scott know, we can set up ride sharing. Counsel Julek.
Sorry, just for the next thing.
Oh, sorry. Anything, any other discussion on that one from counsel? Okay. Any other items counsel would like to bring forward? Counsel Julek.
I would like to bring forward, oh, for heaven's sake, 7.5, please.
Discussion. Seconder, Counsel Noxana. All in favor? Carried. Counsel Julek.
I would like to go to this. I think it would be, it falls in nicely with my role on the health task force, and I think it's something that's important for the North. So I would like to attend if counsel would give us permission to go.
Okay. Want to put a motion on the floor?
I would like to make a motion that we allow counsel to go to the 2024 Mental Health and Addiction Symposium in Prince George and approve costs.
Seconder, Counsel Norbury. Discussion. I'll just make a couple comments. One, thanks Counsel Julek. She's the one that forwarded this to myself, and I just asked our CEO to make sure we got it on the agenda to get travel approval for anybody from council would like to attend. So again, I think just advise Ms. Scott if we're going to attend, then they can set up travel and hotels. Any other discussion? Call a question. All in favor? Carried. Any other items counsel would like to bring forward? Counsel Norbury.
Thank you, Merrick Calca. 7.8, TR Cars.
Discussion. Seconder, Counsel Hoffman. All in favor? Carried. Counselor Norbury.
Thank you, Merrick Calca. So we do have a letter from Ms. Snyder in regards to their annual golf tournament. I'm hoping that we could send a letter back to Ms. Snyder explaining the rationale why. I mean, I spoke with Ms. Snyder over the weekend regarding this issue, and I explained, you know, where we're at, but at the same time, I think it should come from the district to explain the reason why we were unable to support them in the fee waiver costs, maybe cite the community charter. I think it's Part 325. Yes, I'll make a motion that we send a letter to Ms. Snyder in regards to counsel's decision upon why we did not approve the fee waiver costs for industrial metalworks citing the community charter.
Okay. Seconder, Counsel Noxana. Discussion. Yeah, thanks for bringing that forward. I believe we did send a letter to Industrial Metalworks the last time when they requested the same thing. So I understand it from TR Cars Society that they're trying, you know, trying to obviously raise as much funds as they can. Another group is putting along, which is a business. So again, I appreciate sending the letters so I have that information. So Counsel Norbury.
Thank you, Merrick Calca. And I think there's just a little bit of confusion of, you know, who the sponsor is, who the organizer is, and who's putting it on, right? So let's just, you know, send them that clarification. That's all. Thanks.
Yep, appreciate that. Any other discussion? Okay, call the question. All in favor? Carried. Are there any other items and correspondence counsel would like to bring forward for discussion? Okay, moving on to new business. Tumbler Ridge Community Forest Corporation Council Resolutions. Report dated September 3, 2024 from the Deputy Corporate Officer regarding the Tumbler Ridge Community Forest Corporation Council Resolutions. Recommendations? Counsel Norbury.
I'll make some recommendations. That the annual general meeting of the Tumbler Ridge Community Forest Corporation be deemed to have been held on June 30, 2024, and the date to be confirmed as the annual reference date for the company, and that a one-year period following the annual reference date be the next annual reference period.
Seconder, Counsel Hoffman. Discussion. Call the question. All in favor? Motion carries.
That KPMG LLP be appointed auditors for the company for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2024, and their remuneration of auditors be fixed by the directors.
Seconder, Counsel Hoffman. Discussion. Call the question. All in favor? Motion carries. Counsel Norbury, sorry.
That the fiscal financial statements of the Tumbler Ridge Community Forest Corporation as the company for the company's financial year ending December 31, 2023 be approved as presented.
Seconder, Counsel Noxana. Discussion. Call the question. All in favor? Motion carries.
That March Dufrain, Alan Kangas, Chris Norbury, Hugh Kingwell, and Bernie Lehman be elected as directors of the Tumbler Ridge Community Forest for the next annual reference period, or until their successors are elected or appointed.
Seconder, Counsel Klikash. Discussion. Counsel Julek.
I just had a couple of questions, mostly for clarification. So Counsel Norbury is on, if I understood right, I always felt that Counsel Norbury is on as a representative of counsel. Is that correct?
Appointed by mayor and council, yep.
Okay. And the second question, or the second point I would like to make is that in this report, we do have the addresses of the directors, and I wonder if we want to, moving forward, not have those published? And Counsel Norbury is wrong.
Ms. Scott? Not sure if that's normal procedure, producing that information.
Page 58 of our package.
Yeah, I was going to say page 58.
I believe that we should not, next time, publish those addresses.
Okay. So is it something we can check into? Maybe it's us because of the corporation on behalf of the DTR. So the DTR are 100% shareholders, and because they've been appointed by the council of the day, or days, which depends on the elections that their names have to with their address, just like an elected official? I wonder if it's because it's a DTR-owned corporation?
We can see clarification on that.
Thank you. Okay, Counsel Hoffman.
Thank you. Just on the point of addresses, I think it might be appropriate to leave the P O boxes so that they're available as a mailing address, as opposed to the personal address, which has no beneficial purpose, at least not in Tumbler Ridge. But if we're investigating further, I'll defer to that, but I think that might just be an easy way to do it.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, call the question. All in favor? Carried. Counselor Norbury.
That all lawful contracts, acts, proceedings, appointments, and payments made by the directors of the company during the last annual reference period and which have previously been disclosed to the shareholder are approved, ratified, and confirmed.
Seconder, Counsel Noxana. Discussion. Call the question. All in favor? Carried. Okay, 9.2, Temporary Use Permit 228 Quarry Crescent. Report dated September 3, 2024 from the Deputy Corporate Officer regarding Temporary Use Permit 228 Quarry Crescent. Recommendation, Counsel Julek.
The council receives this report for discussion.
Seconder, Counsel Noxana. All in favor? Motion carried. Before I go to Counsel Julek, I'm aware that Ms. Scott informed me just before the meeting started that we did receive one after the agendas were printed, not after the deadline, but after the agendas were printed. Ms. Scott, could you read that out, please?
This comment, sorry, this comment says, "By approving the temporary use permit, council is creating competition for the taxpayers as the district currently has a campground on sale."
And it's from who?
This is from Wayne McBrarty.
Thank you. Counsel Julek.
So I'd still like to see, in this case, I don't, I'm not necessarily against the permit, but I'd still like to see a limited amount of sites, and then I would be comfortable with a three-year permit due to the cost that Mr. Howe would have to incur for, if we were to okay it, then there's cost for him. So if we could limit it, I would be in favor of a three-year permit, but I'm not in favor of more sites. And when I did talk to Mr. Howe, when we were discussing this prior to our other meeting, he was fine. He didn't seem to think it was out of line to ask for 12 sites. And this, for me, was reinforced in the letters that we received from Mr. Johnston and Mr. and Mrs. Van Berbant. I always say that wrong. Just the concerns that they had that we would be adding more sites when we weren't necessarily utilizing all of our sites already. The part for me where I was sold on allowing it out there is Mr. Howe talked about the ability to have a unique type of atmosphere out there. So if you were, let's say, in the welding profession, he has space out there so you could work on things in his yard after hours. And I would agree with that, as well as, you know, if you have some heavy equipment that you want to park there, that that would be a better spot than the Monkman RV Park, as that's not allowed. And I agree that there's some spots other. I just see the benefits. I would be, I would not want to see a full-fledged. I would like to see us limit the amounts of sites to see how that would work before we would give him any kind of a length of permit. So that's where I stand on that.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Counsel Norbury, and then Counsel Hoffman.
Thank you, Merrick Calca. So reviewing the, I don't think, I can't remember a time that we've actually had anybody write in opposition to a temporary permit. So this is an interesting scenario on how we can navigate that and still take in people's input and take value in it. There, we've, so from hearing from Ms. Scott and from, you know, some people, Maxine and Tony, you know, they're concerned about competition with the district. You know, I reached out to, you know, the proponents of the Monkman RV Park, as well as the flatbed campground. You know, Monkman RV Park said it's their best year they've ever had. So my thoughts is, you know, they've had a, they've had a better year. I think there's room. I think there's room for opportunities, you know, and the Lions Campground, you know, they're, they're trying to operate something different. You know, they want, they're wanting to, you know, be more of a family campground, less of a workman's campground. I mean, that's, you know, that's their choice. But this could be an opportunity for someone else to do that. You know, and going into a little bit of my ideology and how government enters into the business realm, I don't think that we should be competing with businesses if there's a business that can operate. Now, we have to offer some services because there isn't any operators. We have to have RV parks. We have to, because there's nobody else there. Now, I think we should be operating as an alternative, but not as competition. So I don't want to do anything to inhibit business operations in our community, because I think that to the business community shows that we are here to offer services, not to compete in business. So I don't want to put any restrictions on this or on this individual to operate in our RV park. I want them to succeed. I want business to succeed in Tumbler Ridge. The only thing that I would say would be limiting the term of the temporary use permit to review. So we have Mr. Johnston comment on his concern about his area. I think they're legitimate concerns. Now, reading about the type of security that's going to be out in the RV park, I don't see that being an issue, but at the same time, I think it would be appropriate for us to review after a year, in case there is any issues. Yeah, that's my comments. Thanks.
Counsel Hoffman, then Counsel Klikash.
Thank you, Mayor. For one, I, this is partially conceptual. I don't think a three-year temporary use permit is appropriate. I think we should do it a year at a time in case there is an issue, and some local resistance is also there. So I'm not sold 100% yet, but I don't see myself being okay with anything more than a one-year permit in this case. As far as temporary, I think it is also appropriate to limit the number of sites. If 12 is sort of the discussed, I don't really have an objection to that. But if it does go gangbusters, it's harder to pull back the reins if it is a larger thing going on. And I didn't plan on calling this, but Counsel Norbury set me on the path. You're right. I'd rather a person be running our RV park, but that's not being expressed by Mr. Howe. If he was interested in that, I think it would be a whole other conversation if he was looking to take over the RV park. If he's listening, I'd be happy to have that discussion and proposal, or proposal made if he wanted to do an RV park as the primary business. But conceptually, I mean, I'd rather say yes, just as a general statement. But this is pretty much off the beaten path. It requires a temporary use permit, and I think temporary, to my mind, is a year or two, not three as a starting point. But that's where I'm at with it. I think we need to put, as it's temporary use, I think we need to put appropriate restrictions on here, especially since there are people that are not thrilled with this idea.
Thank you. Counsel Klikash, then Counsel Dusso.
The thing I see is there is a certain amount of infrastructure that has to be put in. And that's, you know, if you're going to invest in that for just one year, I don't think it's worthwhile. But if it was a three-year, well, then it could possibly pay for itself. The other thing I see is that we don't have, we only got eight to 10 winter sites in the town. And he's apparently going to have winter sites there. So most of the time, those winter sites are full. And I think it'd be a good thing to have some extra winter sites. So whether we develop them or we get Mr. Howe to do it. And I believe that would be better if Mr. Howe did it in taxpayer money.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel Dusso, and then Counsel Noxana.
Thank you, your worship. I'm not against this at all, but it comes down to also zoning with the new bylaws that are coming in. Even with the temporary zoning permit, there cannot be any permanent or temporary use of structures on the property. So does that mean we have to go back and change our bylaws again and set that back? So if I could get some clarification on that.
Ms. Scott.
The way the wording is written, keep in mind, this new zoning bylaw is still in draft form, but the way that the wording is written is that 47. B says, "The temporary use or structure must not result in permanent alterations." And 47.1 F says, "No temporary building, structure, or use shall be used as a dwelling."
Follow-up, Counsel Dusso.
So how would that affect him going forward, I guess, would be my question.
Ms. Scott.
If counsel approved this at this point, it would be an existing nonconformity. If the bylaw continued, if the draft bylaw was continued as is and was adopted, it would be an existing nonconformity. But I don't know that he would be allowed to extend for a further three years.
Follow-up, Counsel Dusso.
No, that answers. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Noxana.
Thank you. I did see the concerns from residents brought forward, and it is great to hear from our residents. And I would agree with Counselor Norbury that this doesn't often happen, so very exciting. However, these concerns or risks can be mitigated, I think, and we have some great ideas to ensure that there's no competition that should negatively affect district campgrounds. He's looking at doing winter sites, which we're really lacking anyway. So I'm in favor of granting him a temporary permit and then working through the issues that may arise with bylaws and zoning and things, because this is something the district needs. We are short on housing, specifically in the winter months. We want residents here, and we want them to have options that work for them. So happy to work through these with him.
Thank you. Counsel Hoffman.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sorry, did I miss that? Was that in the proposal, winter, or is that something that was discussed outside of the proposal?
I believe it talks about it in some of the staff on site.
So just looking at the request, RV self-storage, mini-repair rentals, trailer fabrication, moving home manufacturing. Like, I didn't see it in the actual application, which is why, I mean, I like the idea, definitely. But if we're, that's going to edge me towards a yes, I would want to see it in writing. That's what's in fact going on, because that is something we are very much short on in town.
Ms. Scott, are you aware of it in regards to winter sites? I believe there was something mentioned in regards, and I'm just trying to glance over the staff reports from the inspections that were done by staff at the site of the proposed variance application.
In the actual application that was submitted, it doesn't mention winter sites, but we did have our Director of Operations review the site to see if there would be any impacts if he did operate in the winter. So it doesn't specifically mention that in his application, but we did have staff review that, just in case.
So it does say on page 76, closer to the bottom of the one report that came from staff, there are plans to only run a handful of sites over the winter months. So I'm assuming that was discussion by the proponent with staff when they went out and did the onsite walkthrough. Counsel Julek, and then Counsel Norbury.
I'm ready to make a motion, but I'm also okay to continue discussion.
Thanks, because I'd like to get a chance. Counsel Norbury.
I was ready to do a motion as well.
If somebody wants to do a motion, I can discuss it in the motion.
Thank you, Merrick Calca. That counsel approves the temporary use permit valid for a period of 12 months to Will Howe of Grizzly Dog Holdings, LTD 228 Quarry Crescent, Tumbler Ridge, PID 029207649, Personal Aid District Lock 3184, Peace River District Plan, BCP 22621, to conduct rural resources, business of RV park, which is not permitted in an industrial M1 zone.
Seconder, Counsel Noxana. Discussion. Oh, wait. Counsel Klikash.
I understand that you said 12 months. I don't believe that's long enough to put in a system like this. So I think we should have, you know, at least two years.
Okay, thank you. Just before I go to the rest of counsel, Ms. Scott, my understanding of the information I read in the background, this was to be approved by counsel. There's an opportunity, a one-time opportunity to extend the variance application. So if we were to do a 12-month variance, and it was to get voted through on counsel, the proponent would have an opportunity to come back in for an extension. Is the extension for another 12 months?
12 months, yes.
So it would be the same allotment, so if it's 24 months, up to 24 months on the second. Okay, thank you. Counsel Norbury, and then Counsel Julek.
Thank you, Merrick Calca. My comments are in regards to the 12 months, is that we do have, three people expressed their concerns. One regarding traffic around the area, Mr. Johnston, safety. I would like to give a little bit of a feeling out period and see how this would actually play out. You know, I think it's appropriate for us to reply back to Mr. Johnston. We're going to try this for a year. We're going to revisit it in a year so we can address your concerns, if they are, if anything's happened there. And we're, you know, there's some comments about competing with our RV parks. This gives it a full year for the RV parks to find out if this is negatively impacting their business, or both, all the businesses in Tumbler Ridge can sort of work in harmony without affecting each other negatively. So that's why I'm looking at a 12-month, just to give it a trial period versus the full time, because, again, I'm not a fan of limiting business and how they can operate. Thanks.
Thank you. Counsel Julek.
I, in essence, Mr. Howe would be competing with the District of Tumbler Ridge. So I see, I look at that a little bit differently. I'm also of the thoughts of Counsel Klikash. I think that the cost that Mr. Howe would incur in setting up the RV sites would be prohibitive if we only wanted to allow for one year. I would, I would wonder how he would recoup his costs, and so I wonder if he would even be interested in moving forward. And for me, I'm okay to do three years, but I really strongly feel like we need to limit the amount of sites to begin with. That's where I'm at with that. And then the other, again, I would say, his take on this, after my conversations with him, are that they would be very unique in comparison. They, he's not offering the same type of service that our local RV park and the Lions campground are. Like, he's offering a different type of service. And there's 13 winter sites at Monkman RV site. So if he, if we were to do it for 12, my motion would have asked for three years and 12 sites.
Okay, thank you. Any more discussion? So I'm going to make a couple of comments, and then it was finally have the motion put on the floor first. I mean, one, I appreciate the three residents that did reach out in regards to some concerns they had and such, you know, the extra traffic and, you know, potential concerns with littering and stuff like that out in the area. You know, there was talk about theft in here and stuff like that. And I go back to the staff reports, you know. Ms. Scott, I want to thank you guys for that. I mean, I didn't realize that's, you know, something we did. To be honest, I went through a variance application to the DTR, which I had to excuse myself for. I'll be honest, I didn't see the same kind of report on my residence, but, which is fine. But to me, it's very thorough when we, when we get these two, and I mean, they obviously came from the same staff member, from two different, obviously, looks. And, you know, they talk about some of the stuff that they were, other, it was already onsite at this location, or has been, will be implemented, you know, whether that's the security cameras, the security gates, you know, full access for emergency services, whether, to me, that's our fire department, or our CMP or ambulance service talks about having gate access. If there's a power outage, there's already plans in place to make sure that's dealt with. So, you know, to me, when staff did this and went out and did all that, I think we get a really good view of the onsite work, whether it was, you know, talk about the fire inspections that they've had previously out there, and the proponent always willing to work with the DTR and such. So I appreciate staff getting those out. So, I appreciate staff getting those out, because I think that helps too, as well as give us that information. Now, going back to the letters, and as well as the letter that Ms. Scott had read, because our agendas were printed before that had come in. My concern is, and the thing I've heard and such, is a lot of people are unaware of this. I was approached personally. I know the DTR has done a great job working with the individual to make sure he had the right information about this variance. But, my concern is, maybe we didn't do proper advertising, or tough sometimes when, where can we put it? Where can we post it? Whatever. To me, I actually believe, and, you know, no disrespect to the proponent, my understanding, he doesn't want to get going, reading through that, and reading through his first application. But, it makes me wonder if we've had the opportunity for our residents to comment, whether it's opposed or for. Some were unaware that any resident of Tumbler Ridge can either be opposed or for. Some were given misled down the wrong path, that it didn't affect them because they didn't have an industrial property in a heavy industrial area. So, thank you very much. But, yeah, it only affects those people. Well, it doesn't. It affects our community. So, to me, I think this is an opportunity. And I'd like to ask Ms. Scott where we did advertise it. I know it was on our, posted on our building and such, but I don't believe we made it in time to be in the paper or in other locations. But, if we can just get a sample of where the DTR advertised this variance application.
It was posted and advertised as per the public notification bylaw that counsel has passed. So, it was on our website. It was on our social media. It was on our public notice posting board at the community center and at, here at the town hall.
I guess, you know, I don't believe it's, you know, I'm not saying it's staff, but do staff feel that that was, we've given ample time and advertised in the right spots to get all the residents a chance to make comment, either for or against?
We've heard comments from the public that they, that they were not given an opportunity. And maybe that is perhaps something that counsel wants to revisit, is that public notifications bylaw, to make sure that we are reaching more people. Because that is what we followed. But, we have heard comments that not everybody that thought this should have been notified was notified.
Okay, thank you. And, yeah, I mean, obviously, you're following the bylaw. And I remember having a discussion with the bylaw when it came out, was because we were, you know, we're losing the paper and such. And when the paper did come back, I don't think we revisited it after that point, because we had no papers. So, we're trying to find a way. And I believe every community that loses the local paper or a regional paper has those issues. How do you get it out to the residents? And, you know, I know they picked in the thing it talks about, the community center and such. So, I appreciate the comments. I'll be honest, my personal opinion, making sure and make the right decision for the community of Tumbler Ridge is, to me, I'm going to put a motion on the floor that we defer this. Allow two weeks, or whatever it may be, to our next meeting, for staff to re-advertise this temporary use permit for two-two-eight Quarry Crescent for the variance. Take a seconder, Counselor Julik, discussion. I'll make another call. Again, it's not against the proponent, but I have heard multiple people say they were unaware that they actually even had a chance, or were able to make a comment, whether they were for or against this variance application. And I think it's important that people have that opportunity to be able to, you know, give their opinion, whether they're opposed or in favor of it, so that we have all the information, not just from three residents. And I appreciate the three residents that a hundred percent reached out. To me, this is something that people are looking at. Maybe it's a big thing, and maybe it's not. But, again, I think we should make sure that we are doing our due diligence as mayor and counsel, making sure everybody has an opportunity to give feedback, for or against. And, you know, like, you know, I hear from other councils, well, we should do it twelve. No, don't do twelve, because it should be up to the business. Which I am all about business. I want to see as many businesses come to this community, help where we can, whether it's, you know, like this, this variance and stuff, until we work through the zoning bylaw. But, what about, you know, like, now we're twelve months, someone says twenty-four months? Like, I'll be honest, like, to me, when we look at the variance, I thought it was a three-year variance, because it, of the cost to the individual. And then, obviously, if it doesn't get added to our draft bylaws, zoning bylaws, sorry, they have an opportunity to extend for another three years. It kind of pays for whatever they put into it. That's, but I think it's fair to have our residents have a say. Okay, Counselor Julik, and then Counselor Norbury.
I'll be voting in favor of the deferral. I have not been approached by anybody, but I will admit that I did not know everybody in town could answer back. So, like, if I, you know, I, and possibly it was even in the reading, but I guess, because I knew it was going to come back to me, I didn't even actually read the posting of that. So, I didn't know that everybody in the community could submit an opinion. So, for that reason, I'll be, I'll be supporting the deferral.
Thank you. Counselor Norbury.
Thank you, Mayor Kalka. Hearing how hotly contested it is with yourself and people you speak to, I'd be interested to hear what they have to say. And give, you know, Mr. Howe an opportunity to listen to what we have to say, and get back to us as well. You know, I've heard Counselor Julik reference a conversation she and Mr. Howe have had multiple times. I'd be kind of curious to hear from him, you know, like, are you okay with twelve? Is that fine with you? So, yeah, I wouldn't mind a little more time to investigate, and go from there. Thanks.
Thanks, appreciate that. And I won't say hostile comments or residents. Some people didn't know they could actually make a comment. They thought it was only, I mean, I'll be honest, you know, the rumor was that they could only, it was only the people that it was affecting. And that was in the neighboring zone, or parcels around the heavy industrial. There were some people, obviously, some were maybe for, some were, I don't know where they stand. But, I mean, it's, that's what I've heard. I was in the office last week, and I was busy in my office, because people didn't know they could submit. And I think we have to give fairness. And this is nothing against staff. I think they did with our bylaw states, this is where we advertise. I don't think we re-looked at that bylaw since the paper has come back online. And so, I think that's the reason I support the deferral, to give a fair opportunity. Counselor Klikash.
Yes, Your Worship. Are we sure that we're going to allow winter hookups at the RV park this winter? And the other thing is, are we going to allow mechanics to work on trucks, and welders to weld? In the past, we haven't done that. So, that's another issue. It's the other side of the spectrum.
Yep. Nope, thank you. We'll go for any more discussion in regards to the deferral, and then we'll go back and ask those questions. Maybe we can get some information. Any more discussion in regards to the deferral? My only question would be to Ms. Scott. I know, I'm not looking for it to come back. Can I apologize? Not, I don't want to set a date to this. I don't want it to come back at a P and P, but the next regular meeting was, does that give staff enough time? And I apologize to ask it that way.
Yeah, I am not familiar with the publication dates of the newspapers. So, I'm not sure if I can answer that.
Would it be, like, normally, I know when you defer, you're supposed to put a date to the deferral. I did not. October seventh is about a month.
October seventh would work, yes.
I'm just going to make an amendment to the deferral, that we have it back in front of counsel for the meeting of October seventh. If I can get a seconder on the amendment. Counselor Julik, any discussion on the amendment? Okay, call the question on the amended motion. All in favor, carried. So, the deferral now has a deed of return back to counsel for October seventh. Any more discussion on the amended motion? Call the question, all in favor? Opposed, sorry, I'll do it again. All in favor? Okay, motion carries. And just the questions from Counselor Klikash in regards to, does the community, or does the district plan on having the Monkman RV park open for the winter, for the thirteen stalls that were mentioned? Are we aware?
I believe we are, yes.
Okay. And do we, at this point, allow mechanical trucks in the Monkman RV park, whether it's to park or do work?
They are not allowed to do work. I am not sure about parking, that I don't know.
Okay. Counselor Klikash, follow-up, you're good there?
Yeah, everything's good.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry to put staff on the spot there. Nine point three, twenty-twenty-four, permissive tax exemptions. Report dated September third, twenty-twenty-four, from Deputy Corporate Officer, regarding twenty-twenty-four permissive tax exemptions. Recommendation, please, Counselor Julik.
That counsel receives this report for discussion.
Seconder. Counselor Oxana. All in favor? Carried. Counselor Julik.
I have a couple of questions. The TR Children's Society is listed on our, on the list that was given to us on page, sorry, I'm scrolling, on page eighty-seven. I had thought that Children's Society had, was no longer. And that was in the total of a thousand twenty-two. And, do you want me to ask the second question?
No.
All right.
I just know that what the motion is, so the other ones will come forward another time. They're only looking, if you.
They're only looking for the.
It's just for the two, but we might get clarity, because we might have an opportunity to send that list. Because staff brings them forward as the dates match up.
Gotcha.
Ms. Scott.
I apparently did not read well enough. The TR Children's Society that's listed there is actually the YMCA.
Yes. The other question I have is, when we do our grant and aid, and our fee-for-service budget deliberations, are these amount listed in there so that we can consider them as an amount that, in effect, I get that it's not a grant and aid, but that that's a value of income? I just, I could have went back and looked, but I.
At this time, it's not. It is, so if they're asking for a certain amount, this, I don't, I've never seen this amount included into that. I think it's something that we should have all the full information of what they're receiving.
Okay.
Ms. Scott, is that correct? So, we're just wondering when we talk about some of these organizations, when they do come in looking for either a fee-for-service or a grant and aid. My understanding, I mean, unless it's in the background, and I've missed it, but we don't see this amount that we've also approved a tax exemption of the nine-twenty-two for the Curling Rinker, Lions, Clobber, whoever it is coming in for a grant and aid. Could be anybody that's on this list.
On the grant and aid application form that we've given this. It will be part of, the Chief Financial Officer is working on a very detailed report for counsel for the next policy procedures meeting of all of the grant and aid, fee-for-service, permissive tax exemptions, all of those things that we give out. And I believe it will be on that report.
Follow-up.
And then finally, so, with this permissive tax exemption, do they need to report back to us with their finances and stuff? Like, so, generally with the grant and aid, we have to get a report back from those organizations. Do we also get that from these organizations? I'm concerned, just because I'm curious about a couple of them, you know, what does that look like? We give them a tax exemption, and then maybe they're not doing well as a nonprofit, and then we're left with a.
Ms. Scott.
Yeah, there, they don't report back after. But, as, let me just find the correct page. So, on page eighty-five and eighty-six, it does talk about part of the application form. They do have to include their most recent financial statements. They have to provide their operating budgets. They have to provide projected operating budgets. And then additionally, in that application form, they do have to talk about other sources of income that they, or not income, other sources of revenue that they have also tried to identify. And if, what they're doing to work towards self-sufficiency. So, these are all questions that are in the application form when they apply for the permissive tax exemption.
Follow-up.
Do all the permissive tax exemptions come back to counsel for us to approve? And would we have access to that information when, like, would the application come to us before we make that decision?
Ms. Scott.
To review the actual application itself, staff reviews the applications to make sure that they are compliant before we compile the list for counsel.
Good?
I'm good, yeah, thanks.
Okay, any other discussion? Take recommendation two, if counsel will.
Thank you, Mayor Kalka. That the permissive tax exemption bylaw states that the Stomobile Club and the Sportsman Association's exemptions be subject to signing the agreements October thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four.
Seconder. Counselor Oxana. Call the question, all in favor? Motion carries. Recommendation number three, Counselor Norbury.
That counsel approves a hundred percent permissive tax exemption for each organization listed in the attached table for the twenty-twenty-five to twenty-twenty-seven period, subject to fulfilling any conditions outlined in the bylaw.
Counselor Oxana. Counselor Norbury.
Thank you, Mayor Kalka. So, you know, listening to Counselor Julik's comments about, you know, making sure we've dotted our Ts and crossed our Is. You know, I can appreciate, you know, wanting to be thorough, but at the same time, let's not forget, you know, some, a lot of these organizations, they're volunteers. How much, how much barriers do we want to put in front of the Curling Club, or the Old Timers Hockey Club? You know, at the end of the day, you know, if they're, if they're a nonprofit organization in good standings, I am happy to give them this exemption, so they can operate to have one less thing to worry about having to pay. And as an organization that has, that's, you know, looking down, as a representative of another organization that looks down, not in our local municipality, I want to be clear, Self-Piece Health Services Society in Dawson Creek, you know, having the city try and ask for property taxes for, you know, a service that we're providing there, their municipality. It kind of feels like a challenge, you know, when an organization, like all these listed here, are offering services to our community. They're not revenue-generating services. They're for the betterment of the community. We should be doing all that we can to support them. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor, just wanted to make a comment there, just directly to you. This is a time to talk about all the other ones you brought up in our discussion, because this would be the full list that's in front of counsel at this time. Counselor Julik.
I think what I'm understanding is, is they can come forward one at a time, or at a certain time. Like, what we're seeing now is if they fulfill their, if they fulfill what counsel or what is required, then they're good to go. I feel like it's important for us to discuss them in an open meeting, so that the residents know what we're talking about. Like, I feel like for us to just kind of clump them together and say, we're good to go. Because I was surprised at a couple of them on here by myself, because it only comes in once in a while. And so, for me, I feel like for myself, my lack of knowledge, I feel like I'm not probably the only one out there. That's one of the reasons I would say I would like to see them come. I under, it can be as quick or as easy as we want it to be here in chambers. The other thing I would say is, I think that the reporting period, and I hear where Counselor Norbury is coming from, because I've been on those nonprofits, and there's a lot of work and that kind of stuff. I think, though, for me, when you have to do this paperwork, you get to see if your organization is, like, making sure that your organization is financially viable. If we just kind of keep pushing this stuff through, then to me, then everybody gets kind of buried. And then, all of a sudden, you're behind, and you didn't even realize you were behind. I've been part of a nonprofit that happened to. And I think that we need to empower our nonprofits to have a real feel for what they're financially responsible for, where they are financially in a community. If what they're doing is worth the time and effort that they're spending on it, or if they're just getting further into a hole, and that maybe they need to look at some different options. And that, at that point, they could come to town council or town staff and ask for those. So, while I appreciate what Counselor Norbury says, I think that it's important for these requirements to be finished, so that everybody can get on the same page and try to make everybody successful, rather than digging them a hole. So, I will not be voting in favor of this.
Thank you. Counselor Hoffman, and myself.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I couldn't disagree more with Counselor Julik. I look at the numbers here. The only one worth having an administrative burden on is the museum, which I think has quite an administrative burden, and is dealt with annually. Less than a thousand, less than a thousand, less than a thousand, barely. Like, I just don't see it. I don't see it worth the administrative burden for this, for the town or them. They meet their checklist, staff reviews it, and on we go. I just don't see the value here to drag this out for them or for us, with the exception of the museum. I mean, the museum line item is significant enough. And bottom line, I don't think most of these are financially viable. They're nonprofits for a reason. They're not trying to run businesses. They're trying to run activities. Activities are for the benefit of the community. So, no, I can't support anything more than. So no, I can't support anything more than what we've just put up. I just making a burden, an administrative one for a dozen organizations just doesn't seem worthwhile to me, especially for the amounts we're talking about.
Thank you. My question would be back to our CIO and, and the reasoning why, previously we used to do it year for year. Why we'd be looking at a motion that just flatlines it to twenty-twenty-seven? Because things do change. It's not the organizations, but maybe the direction of a council could change. And to me, when we, when we're looking at doing this many years in a row, is there a reasoning for that from staff side?
That is the standard that would be permitted in the community charter. Part of it is to reduce administrative burden. But that, just because we're passing this for three years doesn't mean we can come, can't come back and review it at any time during that three years as well.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, going to call the question. The motion on the floor is that council approves a hundred percent permissive tax exemption for each organization listed in the attached table for the twenty-twenty-five to twenty-twenty-seven period, subject to fulfilling any conditions outlined in the bylaw. Call the question, all in favor? Opposed. Councilor Clickash, Councilor Julik opposed, motion carries. Nine-point-four, Northern Health Grant Application Update, report dated September third, twenty-twenty-four from the Director of Community Services and Facilities regarding Northern Health Grant Application Update. Recommendation? Councilor Noxana?
That council authorizes administration to sign the approved twenty-twenty-four Falls Prevention and Healthy Aging Grant.
Seconder, Councilor Julik. Discussion? Councilor Julik?
I just wanted to say yay to staff for taking the initiative and, and looking for this grant and every penny helps, so. Woo, woo. Thanks.
Any other discussion? Again, same kind of comment, Councilor Julik. I mean, I think, I'll be honest, I think staff does a great job making sure that they're watching for the grants and applying for them. And even if they're not out there, still applying for them and getting them. And, you know, great job again to make sure we get a grant, whether it's big or small, it still assists in keeping some of our taxes out of it, so. Okay, going to call the question, all in favor? Motion carries. Nine-point-five, Let's Talk Discussion for October twenty-second, twenty-twenty-four, report dated September third, twenty-twenty-four from the Executive Assistant regarding Let's Talk Discussion for October twenty-second, twenty-twenty-four. Recommendation, Councilor Norbury?
That council receives this report for discussion?
Seconder, Councilor Noxana. All in favor? Carry. Councilor Norbury?
Thank you, Mayor Kalka. My only comments is I think it'd be appropriate for us to bring up some of the issues that were raised at our last Let's Talk. Just at the beginning to sort of like do the old business type deal, right? Like we had some concerns about BC Housing, this is what we've done. Of course, we can't have that information now because it may be in response to upcoming new UBCMs. But that would be my only comments, is have like a old business section to begin with. Thanks.
I appreciate that because that was my comment. How about a follow-up? There were some promises made. To me, I made promises for sure. I speak on behalf of council, so, you know, I, I confirmed that the line painting will be done this year. My understanding, we are still on target to have line painting done this year. But stuff like that, maybe it's already done before October twenty-second and we can clap about it. But there are some holdups. Just waiting for some warranty work to be completed and staff will move forward, but stuff like that. You know, there were some, there were some questions in regards to BC Housing. There are some questions in regards to some of the unsightly's, what can be done with that. I think it's great to have a follow-up just to, you know, how, see where we, where we went forward on it and where we, maybe we missed circling back for that information, so. Councilor Julik?
I was wondering if we could possibly, just here, I was like kind of tossing around this idea in my head because I had lots of conversations after the discussion, like after we had the formal discussion, then you have people come up and talk to you and stuff. And I was wondering if maybe we could have something at the entrance, people could put in their concerns if they're maybe not comfortable coming to a mic, and then we could answer those in a newsletter or something like that. Or possibly have tables where people can come to talk to each of us counselors and we could write down their concerns, because I think some of that important stuff gets missed. And, and it's still about hearing from the residents. I definitely like the idea of following up with what we discussed at the last meetings, but just an opportunity for folks who maybe aren't comfortable coming up to the mic.
Yeah, I think we can maybe change it up where we have a, a question box. You know, as a command, if they don't feel comfortable, they can put a question in there, they don't have to have a name on it. Usually staff does attend, so maybe we can have it just at the end there when we're not getting any more questions. You know, we can ask staff to maybe appropriately grab the box and we can read them out one by one by council, not putting staff to do it. But if they can bring it up to the front, we could, we could ask the question of whatever residents put in there. I have no problem doing that. And I think like the roundtable, we can do something like different too if you want to do it that way. But my thing is, is that's why we all hang out afterwards, so we can have the one-on-ones or the, the three-on-ones or whatever it may be from the residents. They want to, you know, they obviously want to have a little longer chat. And I think that's why we always hang out. I know I did talk to the new CIO about, you know, like, I've seen it done previously, some of her Let's Talk where we'll have, you know, maybe the directors there or her directors there, and they'll have a table about what departments that. Believe she has a plan that'll come forward to council, probably for later, early twenty-twenty-five, won't be in the twenty-twenty-four. She plans on doing it around a, a special week. I think I'll leave that up to her and, and bring that information before council. But I think it's another opportunity where council could probably partake and, and be there with staff. But more or less staff, that is my idea, or I don't want to take her idea and blow it out, but I think she has some work to do and is going to bring it before council for her idea, but. Topics for, for, to me for Let's Talk, again, follow-up. We should maybe talk about where we are, and it's in the follow-up, in the Fire Smart Program where we are with the, the hiring of coordinator. Obviously, BC Housing should be on there, and I, I think we have time. We may not be able to have all the information back to staff or staff to get it for us, but the UBCM on, you know, once we get some of them minister meetings and then, and then what's set out of there. I mean, everybody's, I'm pretty sure I can speak on behalf of every council in the room and the frustration we're having with BC Housing. I believe with the election year, it's going to even be tougher. We're not getting the answers we want. We're seeing them doing groundbreaking or openings in other communities. I've seen a few, I've been tagged in a few. It, it is, it is heartbreaking and I understand it. But again, I mean, our job is just to keep fighting for it and, and hope for the best and go from there. But I think those are the kind of updates we can do. And if there's anything else that council can bring forward, I think we can talk about health. We'll end up with a health week just before that and stuff, but I think there's, you know, we have a hard time right now inviting Northern Health because of the election there. They're really not responding there, so to add that for October twenty-second, I think it'd be a tight turnaround after the election. I'm not sure. Is there any other items council can think of? Councilor Norbury?
I think Mayor Kalka, maybe, maybe it was, maybe we already discussed it at our last Let's Talk about, but purchases that we've made, you know, capital asset purchases, you know, like machines and stuff, so they know what's, what's coming up. You know, like, hey, we got a new sidewalk clear that we're going to be out there with, you know, that sort of thing, you know? Because people, I think it's good to, you know, to show what we've, what we spent their, spent their money on.
Yep, we can have that for sure. And we did, I think, again, I'll pat Ms. Scott on the back. Pretty much started with the DTR, came to a Let's Talk, was well-prepared in regards to where your taxes go. I thought she explained it very, very well. It's too bad we didn't record it to be able to play. I know not all residents can make Let's Talk, but I think the job she did that night was amazing. Very good information, but I think we can do something similar. Maybe it doesn't have to be Ms. Scott, but if she's comfortable doing it, I'm, she did a great job for us. Especially just stepping into it. She's been here a little longer now, has a bit more time to, to get more of that information maybe. But I, I thought it was, I think that's something we could start off with again. Councilor Norbury, I think it was great for the residents that did, did show up and I think it's a great opportunity. Councilor Julik?
I just had another quick thought. A quick fact sheet maybe available or even a Q, QR code of what available, availability of programs, like what the current list is, what's happening at the pool, what's happening here, what's happening there? And possibly a spot of where to go for info. So if people are looking for whatever info, I'm sure staff will have a better idea of what they get questioned for. Like, so this is, where are you phoned for this? I can't think of anything. I'm sure you guys will do a bang-up job for that. But maybe a QR code or a list, just as we discussed, not, people not getting the information or saying they didn't get the information. If we maybe point them in the right direction, that might give us a couple more.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think, you know, staff can even do that without a Let's Talk. It's more for council. I mean, I know the community center has a calendar. Has everything on there? You know, so I mean, it's out there, it's on our website, it's on our Facebook pages. There's a, a Facebook page, I won't say for town hall, but for the district. I know the community center has their own Facebook page. So to me, this Let's Talk is about letting, to me, I'll be honest with you, the taxpayers amorous. I, I thought it was pretty, pretty respectful, the last meeting. And I, I mean, I think it needs to be respectfully done, but, you know, I mean, taxpayers are what we're here doing for. And to me, if, if we're doing things wrong or they don't agree, then that's, that's the time to have a conversation with and, and move forward. And I mean, to me, I'm, we're doing the best for our community, so have that information handy for the taxpayers and just talk about it. Let them ask the questions. I thought the questions that came from the floor last year were awesome. So the follow-up is going to be what's important to see if we actually did any work on it. Any other specific items? I know we talked about the Capitol, I think I could talk to Ms. Scott and we can probably do up something similar. Everybody else good? Okay. Ms. Scott, is that clear enough? Lots of rambling.
Yes.
Perfect. Nine-point-six, Health Task Force Committee Recommendation, Health Week. Report dated September third, twenty-twenty-four from the Executive Assistant regarding Health Task Force Committee Recommendations, Health Week. Recommendation, Councilor Julik?
That council supports the Health Week and waives the cost for setup and takedown of the event and supply of a coffee cart and water.
Seconder, Councilor Noxana. All in favor, oh, sorry, hang on, discussion. Oh, I see, I bear with some, discussion, Councilor Julik?
I'd just like to note that we actually won't be needing the room for five days. They're only going to be using the room for three days. Mayor Kalka reminded me that the setup would probably happen on the, on a fourth day, so the room probably would be occupied for four days. So the cost will be a little bit lower than noted here. And yeah, I'm hoping that we can get support from council to have this happen. I know Dr. Ife is pretty excited about it. They will also have a day at the, they're planning to have a day at the high school and they're planning to have a day at Willow Hall, and that's where the five days come from and that's why the numbers were off to begin with. But those days will not be held at the community center. They will be at those two venues.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Norbury?
Thank you, Mayor Kalka. I remember when the Building Healthy Communities Committee all spearheaded this as well. It's an outstanding event that I think is, is worth supporting. And we're not talking about a ton of, ton of in-kind support. And I know if Dr. Ife is, is as excited this time as he was last time, he handed out fires to every single person in the community. So I look forward to it this year. Thanks.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Councilor Julik?
I just wanted to note as well that Dr. Ife would like to see this become a yearly event. He, he had hoped to keep that going and then COVID happened and so it became, it got halted. So this would be something probably that we would be looking at every year. So yeah, just wanted to add that to that.
Yeah, okay. Any other discussion from council? Okay, I'm going to make a couple of comments. One thing, it's great, great coming back, that's, it's, you know, anything we can do to help support our residents in regards to health and especially having the doctors there to go through it with people and, and stuff. I've attended before, I think it's, it's well, well done. I will be, I just want to make a comment here, and I know I've already talked to the CIO, so I wait till budget discussions, talk about it. But previously, there used to be a budget within the Health Task Force, and why it was ever removed is, I'm not sure. Well, definitely wouldn't have been done by a motion because I don't remember. I'm usually pretty good at a recall. But it used to be a budget there for, for things like this. It doesn't mean that you don't have to bring it to council, you still have to. But to me, my understanding, and I'm going to ask the CIO, but for the cost, and I know it's going to be a little bit different than what's in here, but right now it's at twenty-five oh four ninety-five. My understanding is that can be covered under the council's budget?
Yes.
Thank you. So that was reasonable, and I'll discuss the, in regards to the Health Task Force budget during budget season, but we used to have ten thousand dollars and it was for these concepts. That's why when you first talked to me, I said, well, you should have it there if you do. I mean, obviously still bring it forward for council, whether they're supported or not. But to know that, that has been taken out of our budget, and I don't believe it's been done by staff. I think previously just all the new staff that has started here, which is very, very, very appreciative that we have a CFO and a, and a CIO and all that. But I think we need to get back into that kind of scenario. Any other discussion? Call the question, all in favor? Motion carries. Nine-point-seven, twenty-twenty-five Budget Calendar, report dated September third, twenty-twenty-four from the Chief Financial Officer regarding twenty-twenty-five Budget Calendar. Recommendation, Councilor Noxana?
That council approves the twenty-twenty-five Budget Calendar.
Seconder, Councilor Gisso. Discussion? Call the question, all in favor? Motion carries. Nine-point-eight, Community Services Policies to Be Repealed. Report dated September third, twenty-twenty-four from Deputy Corporate Officer Regarding the Community Service Policies to Be Repealed. Recommendation, please? Councilor Noxana?
Thanks. You want them all read out?
Please?
That council repeals the following policies. Admin one, Policy and Procedure Manual. Admin two, Incident Reports. Admin four, External Agencies and Bodies. Admin five, Information for Public Release. Admin seven, Receiving of Goods. Admin eight, Accounts Receivable. Admin eleven, Time Sheets. Admin twelve, Contracts. Admin fourteen, Dress Code. Admin fifteen, Risk Management. Admin twenty, Photocopying for Groups. Admin twenty-four, Alcohol and Drugs. Admin thirty, Fire Alarm Procedures. Admin thirty-one, Emergency Procedures. Admin thirty-three, Maintenance Management System Manual. Admin thirty-four, Accident Procedures. Admin thirty-nine, Maintenance Service Rates. Admin forty, Petty Cash. Arena two, Arena Booking Reconciliation. Arena three, Arena Dressing Room Allocation. Mate two, Log Books. Mate three, Maintenance Tools. Rec two, School Key Security.
Seconder, Councilor Hoffman. Discussion? Call the question, all in favor? Motion carry. Moving on to schedule and meetings. Anything from council? Anything from staff?
I would like to, we are trying to schedule the next phase of the cultural awareness, cultural safety training we've been working on, and we are looking at October tenth for that, and that would be a morning session.
Okay, I know we received memo on our counters. Does October tenth work for council? Councilor Norbury?
Thank you, Mayor Kalka. I would need to step out around ten-thirty, but I can make the first half. Thanks.
Due to that it's a networking and training, we don't need a motion added to the counter, Ms. Scott? Thank you. Anything else from council? Okay, any notice of motions? Okay, councilors' business. Anything from council? Okay. I have a few things. There will be, obviously, notes coming when they made this meeting. Staff is very busy, so, but I did meet with Kelly Lake Cree Nation Council and, and the leader. I met with Ms., with them, with Ms. Scott and the Executive Assistant for note-taking. I thought it was a great meeting. Ms. Scott was, I thought she enjoyed it. Certainly, you know, just turning in that networking and engagement with our neighboring communities. So I, I thought the meeting went over well. There was talk in regards to the signpost. We took them up to Public Works Yard, so I thank Ms. Scott for the on-the-fly organization of a, let's go have a view. So thank you for doing that. I think staff pulled that together pretty quick, so thank you for that. Yeah, they all went and looked at, I'll be honest, they all went and looked at the signpost, log, domain log. Fairly happy with it, in my opinion. I mean, I'll wait till I hear comments back from, from them as a group. Some of them wanted to go up and, and get right close to it, so they did. But we had a really good open meeting in regards to, you know, just some of the stuff they're working on and dealing with. And that'll come out in the notes. I don't want to shoot off the hip and be, be wrong in some of the comments. So I didn't see, I don't have the notes in front of me, so I'm not reading them. The other thing I did do is I went down to the RMX Bike Show, Bike Jumps, whatever we want to call it. I thought it was well done. Hats off to the Sliding Association and TORA. I thought they put on a great event. I went on Saturday at the eleven o'clock show. There was a nine o'clock show. The person, they had a slide there doing jumps and the slide did have a collision or a missed, missed opportunity. So there was not running for the eleven o'clock on Saturday or the seven PM on Saturday, so. But I think it was well organized. To me, there was lots of residents out there, lots of, there were some people that, obviously, I didn't see them or know who they were, so I'm thinking people that were up in the area, so I think hats off to them for success in my mind. I did meet with a few residents and a couple organizations that, one being reaching out with Ms. Scott. I believe it's staff that would have a discussion with the, with one of the stratas in town. So I just asked them to reach out or ask Ms. Scott to reach out to them and, and set up a meeting time. to reach out to them and, and set up a meeting time. Again, met with a few residents at Town Hall, and, and some of it was in regards to the variance, and that's why I appreciate the support. I'm all about business, I'm, I'm not going to say it enough there, but I'm all about the business, but we also need to make sure that our residents have an opportunity to show, or at least give comment back for or gain, so I appreciate council support there. Other than that, I think it was a pretty late week. I have other things, I just didn't bring my book in the room, so I'll leave at that, but I will be attending again if anybody from council wants to go on September 14th. I think it's, it's going to be a pretty important day for, for West Morbally First Nations, so definitely show up there. I mean, I do plan on talking to staff, I will be doing a speech on behalf of Tumble Ridge at the TLE signing. Just for councils aware, grand opening of the fairgrounds is this Sunday, and for the residents, so that's this Sunday at the fairgrounds, so if people can make it, it's an opportunity. I did forget to forward off an email to Ms. Scott, and I promised I was going to do it last week, and I forgot to when I left the office, but I do want to make a comment. I received an email from, out of towner that was here, I believe, for the hockey school, made nothing but great comments towards our community center and the community center staff. Personally, mentioning there's Monica Pittman and, and how well she did for them, whether it was the group that put it on or just participants that came in, but it was just mentioned about all the staff at the community center, but I believe Monica was mentioned in the email. I thanked them for the email, because normally we hear the complaints out of it, we never really see, always see the appreciation of what staff has done, gone over and above to do for a, a group that's come in to hold a hockey school or that, so Ms. Scott, I want to thank you, your staff. Obviously, the golf course was mentioned in there as well, and how well they were taken care of and supported by your, by your organization, so thank you for that and your staff for doing that. Any other councilors' business? All right? Question-and-answer period. Gallery?
Well, we thought we were supposed to come here as a Chris and Kelly South Club delegation. Corey received an email, so that's why we're here.
Oh?
They just wanted to question and answer both South Club, so we thought, yeah, and then I just happened to be down to this, but if you can come with?
Is that the upcoming miss, meeting, Ms. Scott?